Recording in progress.
The Crystal City Council meeting to order. Let's start with roll call, please.
Councilmember O. Nessaroson. Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Budiszewski.
Here.
Councilmember Cummings.
Here.
Councilmember Idbol.
Here.
Councilmember Kamish.
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser. Here, you have a quorum.
All right, let's rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council members, we have an agenda before us. Looking for a motion on that agenda. John?
So moved.
All right, looking for a second. Teresa?
I'll second it.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. So, we have a couple appearances tonight. First is our deputy chief, Hubbard, who's going to talk to us about some awards for tonight, so chief, take it away.
Good evening, mayor, council. Thanks for the opportunity to be in front of you today. I have a couple things that I'm going to present with you. The first one is that it's an honor to introduce you to Officer Graham Norberg, who as of June 26th has shed the rookie title from his name and has completed his probationary period and is now a permanent Crystal Police Officer. Come up here so I can see you. Scary. As you know, candidates who hired as Crystal Police Officers endure a rigorous process prior to being given the opportunity to wear our uniform. Candidates complete an application, go through two interview panels, participate in an interview with myself, the chief, and the city manager, conduct an extensive background investigation, a full psychological screening, a physical screening, and physical agility testing before being offered a position. After they are hired, they complete two weeks of administrative and initial training, are given the oath of office by the mayor, and complete three months of individualized field training with an experienced officer. After successfully completing field training, they are approved for solo patrol and are assigned a shift for the remainder of their first year. Once they've successfully completed their probationary year, they are approved for permanent status, which is the benchmark we celebrate tonight with Officer Norberg. Graham was born in Monticello and graduated from St. Anthony High School in 2013. Graham's dad served as a police officer, and Graham knew at an early age he wanted to follow in his footsteps. After serving as a Minneapolis Park Police Agent for two years, he took a position as a detention deputy with the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office for five years. While working in the jail, he was part of this peer support team, a union rep, and most importantly, a trusted teammate on his shift. In addition to his prior work experience, Graham served in the United States Army Reserves for six years as a military police officer, during his time in the National Guard here in many awards and ribbons. Graham, thanks for your service. Graham obtained an associate's degree in law enforcement from North Hennepin Community College and completed his law enforcement skills program at Hennepin Technical College in May 2023. Graham applied for the police officer position with Crystal PD in the spring of 2023 and endured our hiring process prior to being here. Graham's references described him as a good worker, motivated, professional, calm, and collected. These are all qualities we look for in officers that are going to join the Crystal team. Graham impressed everyone he's interacted with throughout his process, and since he's been here, and we're very excited to have him shed the probationary title. He has been currently assigned to a permanent shift. Graham and his wife Danielle currently live in the North Metro and enjoy cooking, reading, and really enjoy traveling. Please join me in officially welcoming Officer Graham Norberg to the Crystal Police Department.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Thank you. And I'm going to present a couple of awards to many people who are not here, but I want you to hear the story. Officer Caston, if you'd like to step up. As you know, Crystal Police Officers do outstanding work every day to serve, protect, and assist those who live or spend time in our community. Most of their work goes largely unrecognized, and we all understand that's part of this job. However, there are times when the actions of officers far surpass our normal motto of service with compassion, integrity, and professionalism. As a part of the Police Department's recognition program, we feel there are times that accomplishment should be recognized in front of the city council and community, which is why we're here right now. I'm honored to recognize six officers tonight whose work has met that threshold. On December 2, 2023, Officers Josh Caston, Tyler Anthony, Mike Callen, Zach Fecto, and Sergeants Gabe Storrs and Jason Nolan were dispatched to a call of a suicidal party with a handgun walking down the street in a residential area within the city. Dispatch information stated the party had possibly shot off around while walking in the neighborhood. Officers arrived and located the intoxicated male walking around the block while pointing a handgun at his head and yelling at officers. Officers worked together to find cover and try to de-escalate the suicidal male in crisis. During the course of their interaction, the male asked officers what they would do if he pointed a gun at them, suggesting he was contemplating suicide by cop. Officer Caston negotiated with the male while he was still holding the gun to his head, while other officers provided cover and seen security. Officer Caston was eventually able to convince the male to unload his firearm and set it down, putting an end to this incredibly dangerous situation. The male was safely taken into custody and sent to the hospital for evaluation and subsequent charges. The Crystal Police Department Award of Merit is presented to department personnel for an extraordinary act, achievement, or accomplishment during the performance of their normal duties, and is being presented to Officer Caston for his calming de-escalation and communication skills while interacting with a suicidal male in severe crisis. And the Crystal Police Department Exceptional Performance Award is presented to department personnel who distinguish themselves by performing outstanding service during the course of their normal duties, or exceptional service performed above and beyond their normal duties, and is presented to Officers Anthony, Callen, and Fecto, and Sergeant Storrs and Nolan for their outstanding teamwork and remarkable calmness in a highly volatile and quickly evolving situation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great work.
I would just say that this particular call is a call that news stories are made of, constantly. And I could not be more proud of how our officers responded to this incident. It could have gone a number of different ways, and one could have justified a number of different outcomes in this, but this team worked exceptional together, and I just want you to imagine, as it relates to Officer Caston, the intensity of being in what we would call the deadly force situation that there is, and still having the wherewithal to be able to calmly engage with someone and get them to a positive resolution. And again, this is an example of lots of what happens around here, but certainly I think it's particularly noteworthy, so thanks for the time.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. All right. Guys, don't have to stay here. You can go ahead and leave. Yeah, thank you guys for coming in, we appreciate it. All right, next we have a presentation. I think John is going to address the council on that.
I can put it off. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, glad to be here tonight. The city is receiving an Award of Excellence from the Minnesota Recreation and Park Association tonight, and the project is, you may recall, we did a few things at Bassett Creek Park last year. So we had the disc golf course, the dog park, a new pedestrian bridge. There was a lot of habitat restoration and things that went along with that. So the keys, kind of the things I thought made this a unique project, is we were able to improve handicapped accessibility in a variety of different ways, able to improve natural resources, and then also implement some of those things that came out of the park system master plan that people have been talking about for a number of years. Projects like this don't happen in a silo. You know, Public Works crews did a lot of our work getting the sites ready for our contractors to come in. The Park and Recreation Commission reviewed the plans and project as it moved forward. Thanks to the city council for supporting the project as well. And I'd also like to thank Carissa. Chris Gobel is the Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation with the City of Brooklyn Center, and she has graciously agreed to join us tonight to present the award. So with that, Carissa.
So who gets the award? I mean, aren't you going to stand up there next to her and get the award?
It's to the council, it's to the city.
All right, mayor, councilmembers, it's an honor to be here tonight to present the Minnesota Recreation and Parks Association 2023 Award of Excellence to the city of Crystal. However, before I do that, I would like to take a few minutes to tell you about the Minnesota Recreation and Parks Association and the Awards of Excellence program. The Minnesota Recreation and Parks Association was formed in 1937 to foster growth and development of the parks and recreation profession throughout the state. We have nearly 900 members that come from municipal, county, state, commercial, and private agencies. The Award of Excellence is an annual program that is solely created to recognize agencies and their staff for an outstanding project that either was implemented in 2023 or receives substantial revisions in 2023. MRPA members may nominate a project for an Award of Excellence in seven different categories. The project today was nominated in the Park and Facility category, and only the top-scoring nominations are selected to receive Award of Excellence recognition. On the behalf of MRPA Awards Committee, it's my pleasure tonight to present an Award of Excellence to the city of Crystal for the improvements at Bassett Creek Park. And as a neighboring agency in Brooklyn Center, I get the honor to work with many different members of the Crystal Parks and Rec Department, and I enjoy doing so very much, so I was gladly volunteering to do this tonight in front of all of you. Thank you.
Thanks, Carissa.
You got like a photo, or? Yeah, I mean, is there any way we could capture this photo? Come on, get together, come on.
Adam's got it.
Yeah. Oh, up by the flag here. Do I need to draw traffic here, or what? Come on.
Where we were uncomfortable.
It's better with like the hockey sticks.
Yeah, the hockey sticks are great, yeah. Wonderful, thank you.
Great job. Nice. All right. Next is our consent agenda. We are going to pull 4.4 off of the consent agenda, put it at the head of the regular agenda. So at this time, I'll read the rest into the record. First is the approval of the minutes from the following meetings, the city council work session from June 18th, 2024, and the council meeting for the same date. Approval of the list of license applications submitted by the city clerk to the city council. That list is on file in her office. Adoption of a resolution accepting donations, authorizing a letter to Metro Blue Line Extension Corridor Management Committee. That's the one we've pulled. And then adoption of a resolution approving a new premises permit for lawful gambling at Buffalo Wild Wings. That's store number 69. At 5590 West Broadway, submitted by the West Metro Fire Rescue District Relief Association. That is our consent agenda. Looking for a motion on that. Tracy?
I will make a motion to approve but remove item number 4.4 and move it to the beginning of the regular agenda.
Perfect.
Is that it?
Yep, that should do it.
Second.
All right, all members in favor?
Question?
After.
Okay.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. You got a comment question?
Yeah, so looking at the lawful gambling. So we have Stevo's, Big Louie's. Didn't we also have Lyons? Didn't they also have?
Lyons has their own gambling.
They have their own gambling, okay, so they're separate.
West Metro also has Outtakes, I believe. I think they're still there.
Okay, and so this is in addition, so three now in the city of Crystal.
One, two, three, four. Big Louie's, Stevo's.
Yes, two.
Outtakes. Is that three? That's three.
But Outtakes isn't.
New Hope, right?
Are you talking about city-specific?
Our city.
Or West Metro-specific?
No, our city. So three now.
Yep.
Three locations.
Geez, I'm still identifying as a firefighter. Sorry.
Yep.
All right. Next item is the... Where are we at?
Open forum.
Open forum. We've got two wishing to speak on open forum. Let's start with Rachel Rotten.
Hi. You all, most of you? Yes, I think all of you probably remember that I was advocating for that prairie installation at Bassett Creek Park back before it, like, was approved. And I wanted to give an update about the benefits to the habitat, the ecosystem, and the creatures that are living there. I have two updates. One is about birds, and one is about fireflies. So with the fireflies, I have a friend who lives adjacent to the park, and she has told me that last year, when she would go out at night, she would see maybe two or three fireflies at a time in the forest. And she told me this year, it's like the forest canopy is lighting up at night, so stuff's working. Part of that could be because of all the rain we've been having, because firefly grubs eat soft-bodied insects, and they thrive in wet conditions, but the grass definitely helps to keep that moisture in the ground, too. And then about the birds, I took my kid to the prairie installation recently, and we just walked through, and when I was doing the habitat restoration program at Bassett Creek Park, I would do this little exercise where we all close our eyes for a minute and try to count how many birds we can hear. And it was often only like two or three birds that we could hear. But now, with all these flowers that are blooming, which are providing nectar and pollen for all these insects, I took my kid there recently, and we closed our eyes, and we didn't get to 20 seconds. We lost count. So, thanks. Bye.
All right. Next is Jerome Johnson.
Hi, everyone, and thanks for putting me on. As you know, I spoke.
Jerome, name and address, please.
Yeah, Jerome Johnson, 378 Summit, St. Paul.
Thank you.
Okay. I've been here before talking about the Blue Line Extension and how we think it'll perform. We being SLR 81, and me being a retired transportation economist. How it'll perform vis a vis the next best possible investment that could be made. Today, I want to talk about taking the long view as you approach municipal consent. This is going to unravel quite fast, and we at SLR 81 are concerned and want to get ahead of this. But by taking the long view, what we're really asking you to do is to compare what Met Council is going to be asking, which is to make what Jeff Lundey says is a 100-year investment. I don't think he's exaggerating by much. It's a 50- to 75-year investment, literally a sunk transportation option, that when you make that, it's not going away. And if it is not performing any better than at $3 billion, than $100 million bus rapid transit performs, and you're stuck with that for 50-plus years, that's a hard decision to make. What we're suggesting as a part of the municipal consent process, that when they're asked for options or mitigation, that a bus rapid transit option be considered and evaluated with as much rigor as you've seen in the draft environmental statement that you've all been reviewing. The trade-off is stark. Bus rapid transit at $100 million, it's basically a 10-year asset. Then the buses have to be repurchased and whatnot. Some of the other infrastructure may seem fixed, but it probably will be usable, the street improvements and whatnot, and even the stations would probably still stay in effect with any other light rail-type investments you might make. Why is this important in addition to ensuring that you don't get stuck with a slow-performing asset that puts Crystal behind the eight ball, the mobility eight ball, for decades? Is, I think you're, real quick, you're at an inflection point when it comes to urban transportation. The next five or 10 years, I think, are going to tell us a lot about how things are going to unfold for three quick reasons. One, regional demographics around here are not going to change much, so you're not risking much in terms of ridership ballooning. Number two, you've got trip patterns changing with work, remote work and whatnot, so transit's off by 60%. Hard to see that booming and becoming untenable in five years. And three, something you see in the press these days, the onset of electric vehicles. We don't know where that's going to go, but one thing is, they could be quite a bit cheaper. In five years, I think we'll have a better grip on where that's going, and if they're cheaper, there's going to be more of them, and I think maybe the last thing you want to do is take Highway 81 from six lanes down to four. Also at that time, I think your fixed guideway options out here will improve.
Could use a cattle.
Okay, I'm done.
Fine, I can handle this. I've done it before.
Your fixed guideway options are done. So, or will be clearer to you. So, thanks a lot. Appreciate the time.
Hey, Cheryl?
Yeah, thank you. You know, just a comment. You gave us some data last time you were here, and you don't need to come up. And it looks like that data is playing out in terms of the speed of this particular light rail. It's come out on the DSEIS, so it's a very, very slow light rail as we compared to other communities along, around the country. So, thanks for your work. Thanks for your articulate attention to detail. So, appreciate it.
Thank you. Please let us know if we can, if we can, if you have any other cases.
Yep, you bet. That's it for open forum, unless there's somebody else who would like to speak. Anyone like to speak during open forum? I'm seeing nobody move forward. Couple fakes, but other than that. All right, we will move on to the regular agenda. The first item on the regular agenda is dispersments of $25,000 or greater. I will read those into the record at this time.
Actually, it's the...
Oh, the letter.
4.4.
Thank you. Keep an eye on this guy. So this is 4.4 from the consent agenda. So we made some adjustments to a letter that wasn't the consent agenda. Did you want to real quickly speak on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I should read the revisions. So they're all on the second page, although the signatures got kicked down to the, all the signatures are now on the third page because of the need for more space in the second page. But the actual content change, in the second paragraph on the second page, after the words "going forward," there's a comma, and it now says "including active, non-motorized transportation modes in addition to vehicular traffic," period. Then in the third paragraph, instead of approximately 10 to 15 years ago, in the second line, it says "in 2011 to 2014." Those are the exact years in which Botno Boulevard was reconstructed through Crystal. And then later on in that same paragraph, there's another reference to the 10 to 15 years ago, and instead of where they, double what they were when the city participated in the costs, is what it says, instead of the 10 to 15 years ago. So those are the only changes to the content of the letter.
All right, thank you, John. Any questions for John? Seeing none, looking for a motion on this? Teresa?
I'll make a motion to approve a letter. Is that what I'm doing, or is it more specific than that?
As amended.
As amended to the Metro, or chair of the Met Council.
All right, Forrest?
Second.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right. All right. Dispersments of $25,000 or greater. Just a minute, please. Reading those into the record. LMCIT, League of Minnesota Cities, for third quarter 2024, property and casualty insurance for $67,356. Same payee, third quarter 24, workers' comp insurance for $109,650. Met Council for waterway services for July, $143,220. Waste management for New Hope, Brooklyn Center and Crystal, April recycling is $74,175. Golden Valley Joint Water Commission for May water charges is $193,378. Logist for IT services is $210,592. SEH for 2024 utility reconstruction is $37,139. Hennepin County Property Tax Special Assessments through July 31st is $115,000. Hampton Companies for 3401 Douglas Drive Cleanup is $123,238. UHL Company Inc., City Hall Light Fixer Upgrade for $69,620. IRS Electronic Payments for federal FICA withholding taxes for pay date 6/7/24 is Same payee, and this is for 6/21/24, $77,006. Health Partners for July Health Insurance premiums, $138,690. Menpara for employee city required contributions for pay date 7/5/24 for $72,307. Menpara again for employee contributions for pay date 6/21/24, $76,777. Total dispersments is $1,581,185.34. Council, questions on any of these items? Any of these items? Pretty routine. There's a lot of them, though. All right, looking for a motion. John?
Make a motion to approve the list of dispersments of more than $25,000.
All right, looking for a second. Go ahead, Dave.
I will second that.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, Adam Bell, our city manager, is here to address the council on the Mill and Overlay Project. Adam?
Is that the? 62.
Oh, I'm on the wrong page.
Sorry.
No, I am on the right page.
Yeah, thank you, mayor, members of the council. This item was from a previous meeting regarding the appointment of an applicant for the ID and C. And at the last meeting, when this application was being discussed, some of the council wanted to hold off on it, to gather some more information. I had reached out to the council members who had some specific questions, and I hadn't heard any other needs, so it is back on the agenda for consideration by the council. Staff doesn't have anything really to add at this point, but if there, again, I just want to remind the council that anything that was not public information does need to remain private, but generally can be discussed regarding the applicant or the application, and I'm happy to answer any other questions. But if there's something that the council wanted to discuss, I intentionally put this on the regular agenda, just with the opportunity to discuss it, but if there isn't anything, then I would just, staff does recommend approval at this point, only because it, the applicant does meet the city code eligibility requirements, so.
All right. Any questions from council? Yeah, go ahead.
Quick question. What is our process for removal of members?
It's, a majority of the council can at any time remove for, with or without cause.
Okay.
Okay. Good question. All right. Looking for a motion on this, then? Okay. Good question. All right. Looking for a motion on this, then. John?
Make a motion to approve the appointment of Trina Smith to the Inclusion and Diversity Commission for a term to expire on December 31st of 2025.
Okay. David?
I will second that.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Now, mill and overlay.
What, no Jesse? You think this would be a big opportunity?
Adam, I can advance the slides if you prefer.
I'd rather face the council.
All right.
Look at us in the eye. Look at the council. No, it's, I don't, I don't enjoy looking up and down the...
Thank you, Marina. City Engineer, Public Works Director, Jesse Struve, had a pre-planned, pre-scheduled holiday trip with his family when we hired him. And so, this ended up lining up at this meeting date, so he's not able to meet us tonight. I said I'd go to bat and do my best to explain our infrastructure project, the street project for this year. This was discussed regarding the approval for, to go out to bid back in June. The June 17th meeting, the bids were opened. We did receive those. One of the part, points of discussion was to have, because it included the street reconstruction, as well as the South Public Works facility's parking lot that is in need of repair. That was bid as an alternate portion of this, and it did come under budget by about almost $100,000. And what it did, what that initial estimate did not include was the, the inspection services that you'll see, or you saw was added to this. When our project, our project manager, our engineering project manager, Ben Perkey, had left the city, this is, that's the work that he had been doing. So, that position has been vacant. The city is in the process of replacing that position, but that is something that we will need to contract for, those services for this type of project. Just to give an overview again of the, of this project this year for 2024, it's down in the northwest quadrant of Douglas Drive and 36 Ave, as you can see on the, on the map. And then, as I mentioned, repaving the old Public Works facility. The roads were originally constructed back in the early 2000s, and they're ready for a mill and overlay. It's not a full reconstruction. The parking lot does need to be, it's a reclaim, so the subbase needs to be replaced. I had received a question earlier tonight about alternate options. Because of the condition of the lot, it's, it needs more than just a mill and overlay, trap rock was mentioned. It does need a subbase, you know, the full reclamation. So, I, the council has a couple of options tonight. One, the, we do need to approve, or we do need, the city does need to award the contract for the street portion. If the council wants to continue talking about the public, the public, the old, or the South Public Works facility parking lot, that, the contractor said they can wait a little bit on that because it is a smaller part of the project. But then the SEH inspection services, the staff is asking for that to be awarded as well. So, there are three resolutions for the council to consider. One for the SEH inspection, and then one with both portions, the parking lot and the street recon, mill and overlay, and then the one with only the street, and it pulls out the parking lot. So, I'm not going to go into all the details of it, but again, here's, kind of, I've already gone over some of this. Just so everybody understands, the curb and gutter will be repaired in the project area. The, with the mill and overlay, it's just grinding off the two top inches of the existing bituminous, and then just putting in new. Then, again, the parking lot, it's a full deck, full depth reclamation. That one, it's, it's in serious condition, or serious need of additional work. There are pictures and photos with that, so I'm happy to, I don't know if the council wants to talk about that or discuss the condition of that, the parking lot. The, there's a need, I guess I'll just address it. The city really does need the use of that space for storage, as well as both the salt shed, that we don't have room in any other facility, so we would have to move that. Back in 2013, when it was discussed to possibly do something else with it and sell the land, do single-family housing, there was about 12 lots that could be placed there. Over the 10-year period, there would be, at that time, there would be about $100,000, not savings, but the city would earn about $100,000 with that. That, those conditions obviously have changed. There are serious wetland issues with that, which do pose a challenge. The biggest issue is that the city doesn't really have an alternative for what takes place there now. After the additional golf, the disc golf course was remodeled last year in 2023 at Bassett Creek, we actually used some of the other storage that was going on, eliminated that for the disc golf course. And so, that, that's also at the South Public Works facility. You can see in the photos that were included in the packet, the condition of the pavement at that lot is pretty, pretty rough shape. Again, the salt shed is a, it's a significant size facility, and we don't have any, any area in the city to move that. So, I guess I'm, I can do my best to answer any other specific questions about any of those items.
Forrest?
About the, the Public Works facility, the other structures that are there, what's their condition?
The structures themselves are, they, they require maintenance. They are not, so there's one other building. There's a salt shed, and the, the one other, it used to be the utility billing, or the utility building. That's currently being used for storage, for both Public Works and police have items in that building. It is, it's, it's, it has security. It is being maintained. So, there is a cost to that. It, it's not in the capital plan for replacement, any, in any foreseeable future. As that does age, that will have to come onto the, onto the list. And not in the next 10 years or 15 years, we don't expect to have to do anything significant with it. But it is on the horizon for needing increasing maintenance costs.
Okay. I just, the situation that I'm curious about is like, you know, we redo the parking lot, and then all of a sudden, boom, we've got these buildings, and then it's like, well, shoot, maybe we should have just... Operationally, does it really work well to have it at this location, or would it be better for it to be more, you know, co-located with the Public Works building, or?
We don't, well, we would have to acquire...
Right.
...land.
Yep. Just saying, no.
I...
Operational standpoint.
That's a good question that I hadn't asked Public Works staff or the director. I, I would imagine having it all in one place ideally would be good. It, for the police, they use it for storage of evidence, bicycles, there's, we have a couple of vehicles in there. There are the things that they, they had been using, and that's, you know, we just built the new police station. We don't have space for all that. And that's kind of a, that, that ebbs and flows as far as what, how much storage is required. For them, it's more convenient because it's only a block away. But for Public Works, they need to go down there. Public Works gets around just fine, so they may, they may do.
Okay. Thank you. John?
So, I, after the last time we spoke about this, I went and looked at the streets specifically because I didn't think they would be in that, you know, need of repair. And it's, it's obvious that the mill and overlay is starting to peel up. So, the streets need to be done. And then I took some time to look at the, the old Public Works parking lot. And yeah, these photos definitely are right on with what I saw, that, that asphalt surface is deteriorating, and not only deteriorating from above, but also from underneath as well. And being that it's so close to a wetland area, I mean, something has to be done to it. If we're going to use the salt shed, we can't have an issue like this where the wetland would be contaminated, you know, so there would be any runoff into that, or any, any potential hazardous chemicals that would get into the groundwater. So, I am for doing both at this time. So, that's my position. So, thank you.
The, the environmental aspect, council member, thank you, Mayor. The, I know it had been asked before, do we need to do asphalt? Do we need to do, you know, bituminous pavement? We can't just do gravel. You know, there is, really isn't a cheaper option. Those are much worse in the stormwater management and the environmental aspect. So, that, I know it had been asked before, kind of just generally, it does need a, if it's going to be done, and we really don't have any other options, it needs to be done correctly for multiple reasons.
So, this project, it's also going to include some curb, I presume?
Curb repairs, yes, in the street portion.
Do we know what percent that might be?
I do not know the percentage of the...
It's okay. Not that, not that big of a deal. I'm just curious.
I, in the actual quote, it may have been, oh, that was from SEH. I can get that and let you know at a later date.
I don't need, I don't need you to do that. Don't worry about it. Just thought I'd check and see offhand. So, last time we talked about this, we talked about how we were going to sell the lots, and then this was the first time that we were having a conversation at the council level. My understanding is that we were never going to be able to sell off those lots based on our needs with the, the salt storage. Is that correct?
The, well, from what I understand, based on what I've read and talked to about the previous discussions, there, there really wasn't, it was not a, it was being proposed, but it was not really a, I don't want to say legitimate, but probable option.
Probable option. I was there. I think, John, you were there, too.
Mm-hmm.
We were talking about, that's what we wanted to do with that. And it wasn't, it wasn't wishy-washy at the time. But I understand. I understand there are different motives. It, it just, what happened then just puts kind of a taste in my mouth that I don't really like so much. And to, to the point of this needing to be done, it's space we're using, it's space we're using quite a bit. I'm glad we're using it that much if we're going to have it. I'm going to support both, just because of that. I just, there is, I want this council to be aware, how do I put this? I want, I want you to be aware that it's our responsibility to ask questions and ask good questions. If there's something vague, ask clarifying questions. Make sure we understand exactly what we're, we're saying in these discussions. Because having gone through that and really believing we were going to sell those properties, and then come back to this day and say, yeah, well, it was probably really not ever going to happen, it feels bad. So, just a thing, you know, ask good questions, nail it down, and move forward. That's it. Anybody else? Yeah.
What's the life expectancy of the parking lot once it's done?
Fifteen to 20 years before it'll need some type of treatment, like a, now, the, the traffic on it, obviously, is, it's used quite a bit by the city, and there's, you know, some heavy machinery that goes in there at times, but it's not the same as a road. So, it really will depend on how much impact is used. But the, it, it should be 15 to 20 years before it needs to be any, updated.
So, it would last when we would ever replace or do any work on the buildings on that site?
It should be, I would, I don't want to, you know, can't guarantee that, but yes, it should be, it should last. We, we won't have to replace the road and the buildings at the same, or the parking lot and the buildings at the same time.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going to, like, make this parking lot, and then all of a sudden, we decide we're going to do construction on the buildings. And I, I don't know the effect of the parking lot then, if we start doing construction.
Again, it would depend on what is being done. And, but this, the parking lot, having it reclaimed and new subbase, you should get 15 to 20 years out of it. And if we, one of the things that we, I would say, coming in last year, we, I wish we would have done more on some of our parking lots to maintain them. But of course, that, you know, we didn't have a street fund at the time. We, there really wasn't a mechanism to do that throughout the city. Right now, we're talking about which fund should it come out of, building fund, or if it's a park, parking lot. So, that's, that's being worked out. This parking lot has been, you know, deteriorating with really nothing being done to it, except maybe a pothole here and there. So, going forward, we, we hope to maintain the parking lots better once they're reset, rebuilt.
And we would maintain the size, the current size of the parking lot? Like, there's no way to make it smaller? We need the full size?
Well, it does, it, it has flexed over time. So, there was one additional building there that was removed, and the, you know, we, we add additional paddocks for additional storage materials. We have the, the gravel, sand gravel, the tree beds. So, we have a lot of room to work with, to kind of flex it, depending on what our needs are. We, I, I don't have any expectation, or we haven't had any conversations about making any major changes to the layout or to shrink it. But that would be, that's always a possibility if the need determines it.
All right. Forrest?
And to, and kind of off of that point, you know, and it's mentioned in the memo, this site is quite large. And looking at an aerial map, you know, it seems like there's quite a bit of unused space. Is it possible to really kind of take everything that's happening at Bassett Creek with storage of material and move it to this site? So, Bassett Creek, that area could be more used as a parkland.
I, my understanding is that is the intention.
Okay.
But it's taking time. Some of the materials at Bassett Creek, they're, over time, that, that is the plan. But some of it needs to be kind of reorganized at the Public Works parking area, or the, the South parking.
Okay.
South Public Works facility.
Yeah. I'd, I'd hope that with this project, we can see, that could be a benefit of it. So...
One, one of the issues at the, the Public Works facility is that the, you know, we don't have a lot of flooding here, but given the wetland, on the aerial, it looks bigger than, I don't know if you've been down there recently, it, that, the actual usable space does fluctuate a little bit. You know, it's got, it's not, the usable space is not the entire lot. So, we just have to be careful. We can't place things that are going to be, get us in trouble.
Yeah. A few years back, we had some expanded floodplain lines drawn, which kind of took away some of the functionality as well. All right. One more thing I wanted to say. Adam, I want to thank you for, I guess, your character in this, in this realm. I, I think you were very straight with me when I asked some tough questions, and I really appreciate that. So, thank you. Any other questions? All right. Looking for a motion. John?
Make that motion. I make a motion to award a contract for the 2024 Mill and Overlay project, for the full project.
Okay. Looking for a second on that. Go ahead, Tracy.
I will second that.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. And then, there's the CH. Yep. Looking for a motion?
Yeah, sure. I accept the quote from SEH for the inspection of the 2024 Mill and Overlay.
All right. Looking for a second. Tracy?
I will second that.
All right. Any questions on that part? Pretty straightforward. Appreciate it. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right. Busy night for Adam.
It's been real good.
Joint Powers Agreement.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This item is the Hennepin County Assessors Services, JPA. Since 1993, the city's been using Hennepin County to conduct its property appraisals, their, their assessing services. And the current four-year contract expires end of this month. The county board earlier this year voted... The county board earlier this year voted to eliminate the direct charges to the cities, and they'll be, it'll be going as part of their, just direct to the county tax levy. There was about a $5 million shift from the cities, and it's, it's for all cities with populations of 30,000 or less. The, our legal counsel, as well as the other attorneys, worked with the county attorneys on some revisions, the, there, so there will be a reduction in the, in the budget for the assessing services that we pay for the, their professional services. There are still duties and expenses in that budget department, that category, but it is significantly reduced in that, for that line item. The next, the, so the proposed J P A is actually, instead of having a set term, like I said, this previous one, previous one was, had a four-year duration, the next one is just in perpetuity unless, unless canceled or terminated by either party. So the city is still obligated to provide the same, we, we're required to provide some service, or some facilities for them, some office space for them, which they use a few times a year, so it, it takes up a couple cues, but it's a pretty low burden. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but this was something that was initiated by the county, and we do see it as a benefit, we have been happy with the assessing services. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
All right, thanks, Adam. Questions for Adam? Go ahead, John.
So you have here an annual fee not to exceed $27,948,000, is that quite correct? Is that pretty much, like, fixed over the next, is that going to vary from year to year, or what's the? Do I have that right? No, I have, sorry.
Sorry, which?
I grabbed the wrong number, sorry. I was talking about.
I didn't see that one.
No, no, that, that number's for something else. Sorry about that, but you said that this was a significant cost reduction to the city?
It, well, it's about $200,000 that the city, this year, is paying for the assessing services.
And, back up, you said, I'm sorry, you said it's going to be about $200,000 less or $200,000 total?
It's, this year, we're paying about $200,000.
Okay, and then?
So in '25, we've already been billed for both portions of this year's charges.
Right.
So in 2025, we won't be billed at all for them, so it'll be about a $200,000 reduction.
Reduction, and it'll be something that will be, that, that cost will be passed on to the county?
The county now, well, instead of charging cities for the service, they will be adding it to their levy, there's about a five, I think it's a $5.1 million levy increase, so, because they still need to, they need to provide the service, but they're going to charge the taxpayers directly for cities under 30,000, 30,000 or less.
And so, and the other alternative would be, we actually have our own assessing?
We would hire an assessor.
And this, and that would, could be considerably more expensive?
The amount of work that would be required, and, now, I will admit, staff did not look for that, we didn't go get any quotes, there aren't, most, I think there's 43 cities that currently are using the county.
Yes.
There's not a lot of assessors able to do about 8,000 properties.
Well, I think in years past, we've, we've asked about that, and we've talked about having our own assessor, and we were told previously that it would be considerably more expensive to have someone on staff to do that particular service.
It would be more than one person, that, so.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah, there, there's a, there's a shared efficiency with utilizing the county.
Right, so, yeah, so definitely is, this is the better deal, you know?
It's just a different way of billing.
Yes.
That's more direct. Go ahead, Forrest.
This is totally just a random question. If we were to have our own assessor, would people then still be charged for the coun, oh, wow, so would they, would be double charging residents then? Okay, well, then definitely not do that.
I don't.
Hennepin County is putting it onto their tax rule, right, as part of their?
Well, there would still be, there would still be.
Or is it a special line item?
Can you opt out?
Assessing charges, but we, we pay those separately, these are for just the assessing services, for them to go do, do appraisals, and.
I think he's asking if we were to hire an employee, or employees, or have our staff our own city assessing services, the county would not exempt Crystal residents from that portion of their tax.
Right, it gets, it would all be lumped in, right? Or is it a special line that could?
We haven't seen that, but that would be, I would have a hard time.
It's just, it seems very strong army, kind of, of like, well, if you, you're still, your residents are still paying one or the, way or another, it's just, I don't know.
I, again, I did not look into that aspect of it, but similar to, like, library services, because I'm familiar with those, you, if you're exempt, you then are not charged for those county services. If you're a city, like.
So they have a way of?
They, they have a way, because it should be, you know, there would be, but they don't have their own levying authority, so, I don't know, but I, I would imagine that if a city does hire their own, that, that would be a, I don't think that would fly.
Okay, you would hope not, but you never know. Okay, sorry, sorry for the rabbit hole.
It was great. I, I mean, the difference is, they're going to assess it rather than us assessing and paying a fee for it. Isn't that, is what you're seeing?
As far as the service provided, nothing is changing.
Yep.
The, we're just no longer being billed as a city.
Yep.
Where in the past, we were passing that, those expenses on, to our taxpayers, now they're going to be getting a bill, an increased bill from the county instead of the city.
Yeah, and in the past, we chose to go with that contract because of its efficiencies and the staff that we did not want to dedicate towards it. So functionally, nothing's changing for the assessment services, it's just how it's being billed, and which, which authority is, is collecting the payment. All right, I got it. Anybody else, more questions? We beat that one to death.
Yes, we did. Good job.
Good job.
Yeah.
All right, looking for a motion. Go ahead, John.
Make a motion to approve the joint powers agreement with Hennepin County for assessment services.
All right, looking for a second, Tracy?
I will second.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Our Recreation Director is back, John Elton, he's going to talk about the Crystal Cove Aquatic Center.
Well, good evening again, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Here tonight to talk about some fun pool amenities at the Crystal Cove Aquatic Center. So we're here about a month ago, talking about the large flume slides and the jumping platforms, and those were approved, and they've been ordered, and we're on the way with those. Tonight, I'm here with some of those smaller things that are largely repurchased out of catalogs for the most part, they're not custom like the ones last time were. So it's a busy slide, I apologize for that, but I, I wanted to kind of show where things are on the new pool container. The purple dots are things that we have already purchased, so it shows where they are, so the large flume slides in the bottom right and the jumping platforms. Last time, we talked about the flume slide and decided not to move forward with that, and so what that did is it created an opportunity that, that lighter blue in the upper left, the climbing wall, we had planned to do a fairly small one, that would, could have maybe one person going up and down on it next to the jumping platforms, but with that space open, we did, I should back up, we did look at things like a zip line and stuff, and it, nothing else was really that feasible for that spot. So we did come up with doing a much larger climbing wall, 16 feet tall, nine and a half feet wide, and this would accommodate two kids on it at the same time. So definitely an attraction and much lower cost than what we had initially considered for that spot. Below that is these floating things. The Park and Rec Commission has been very enamored with the snake since last summer, when we first brought that idea up. The other one is a alligator, or crocodile, I guess, I'm not sure which, but anyway, some sort of a gator that can, that would float in the pool in the four-foot depth area, so very popular. Jason from our staff was talking to another pool today, and they said, that gator is just, there's kids on it all the time, you know, they just love that thing. Then the other one we've talked about since last fall as well is that it's, we call it a rope swing, it's kind of a combination zip line rope swing, it's in the bottom left there. And initially, that had been proposed to be in the deep well, and when we looked at the specifications further, it only requires it be in four feet of water. So, so why are we putting that in the deep well then? So we did move that into the four-foot depth so that, you know, that kind of middle-aged group has something fun like that to do. I should point out, the water walk, that is going to come back again, we're hoping to reuse most of that, there may be parts of it we need to purchase, but right now, the plan is to reuse what we can on that. Now I'll take you up to the upper right, the zero-depth pool, the feature that's in there, the largest feature is, you know, 20-some years old, and we talked a bit with the Park and Rec Commission about what that should look like, various options were presented, and they were actually unanimous, and they really, really liked the big feature there. And then also, that's smaller than a current one, so there was a definite desire to have another smaller feature. When I wrote the memo, I had a different, smaller feature in mind, and when we got to looking at it, it had some of the same tippy buckets that this big structure has, so I reached out to our vendor for this, and I said, is there something that can be more fun and maybe even a little bit cheaper? And they said, actually, yes, we, we have something for you. So they came up with this circle, it's got a star, so it's got jets that go into the middle, and it's very different than anything we've got out there. So slight change from what the memo is that I wrote is, next slide, I'll show you a little bit more about what the costs are. I should also point out then the deck shade, we've got four of those, or we had four of those umbrellas out there, and every time the wind blows, our lifeguards are out there cranking it down, and then it gets nice, and then they crank it back up. These are heavy-duty shade structures that we can just leave there, so that would be nicer, six of them proposed. So it is, I'll look back at last October, we were here with the council, talking about the different amenities. So that column on the left is a cost, I actually took this slide right out of that presentation from last October, and said, okay, these are the amenities we talked about on the left, and 101923 is when, is the costs that were associated with those, and those were all estimates at that time, we didn't have any, any solid quotes. And then at that time, we had also talked about combining the platform and the climbing wall into one larger structure, we decided not to do that. But for comparison's sake, on this table, the right-hand cost is what I'm bringing forward today. I added the cost of the platforms to the one on the right, just to keep, make it an apples-to-apples comparison. But that's, you know, so the bottom line is, it's 556 is what we had last year, it's 468. The zero-depth pool feature, what I had presented in the memo was 99,000, it's actually 93,000 doing that circle, but our vendor, and I, so I'll, I'll bring it, and see what, you know, they said, if you're doing one, you know, we can add a second one for just $9,000. So they said, the installation cost is the same, they said, if we're out there doing one, we'll just do two, and, so that's an option. So I think the, yeah, so anyway, so that's an option, so there's a $9,000 difference there, if you prefer to go with the one hoop instead, or if you want to go with two hoops, I have actually two resolutions here ready to go, so whichever way you want to go on that. If you look to the actual cost, taking out the, the diving or jumping platform costs, these are the costs, the number in your memo, I believe, is 303, so if we do this circle, it's 297, 220. If you're interested in going with two of those, which, they actually, that, that particular product, a lot of times they do three or five of them in a row and kind of make a ton lot of them, so that's not an unheard-of thing. But anyway, so climbing wall, 55,800, rope swing, 22,750, floating features, 29,850 for both, for both combined. The zero-depth pool features, I would recommend doing the, you know, for sure, at least doing the one circle, if there's a desire to do two, I mean, 9,000 to get another one is, it's a pretty, you know, that, that could, that's a good way to go as well. Then the shade structures, 95,820. So those are the items, so 297, 220 if you do the one hoop, 306, 220 if you do the two hoops, and, so the recommendation tonight is to make all those purchases, Recreation by Lenny Jones does the Aqua Climb, Aqua Zip In and Zero Depth Pool Spray Features, have 93,000 for the one hoop, or 102 for two, and then Webber Recreation Design does the floatable features and the shade structures. So that's the recommendation, I'm open for questions.
So new floating features, that's, that does not say installed on it?
They hook to the bottom, they float, so their, the pool contractor will put a variety of different hook layouts on the bottom, so.
So that will be included?
So, yeah, there isn't an installation cost, we probably install it ourselves.
Okay. Forrest?
I would just want to say, thank you very much for going back and looking at another option besides the buckets, I know that was something that came up in the Parks and Rec Commission, and I, I really liked the, the variety there, so thank you.
John?
Oh, the climbing wall, so I, does it extend into the pool?
Yeah, I think it goes down about a foot, it's, it's out just a little bit into the pool, extends about a foot down, so you can get onto it.
Okay.
Then it curves over the pool, so when you fall off of it.
Nice, yeah, good, so there's no possibility of falling onto the pool decking or whatever?
No.
Yeah, that's good, all right, that's great.
Other questions, comments?
I do want to just say, the enthusiasm for the, the water tables feature that John mentioned, the zero depths was through the roof in the Parks and Rec Commission, it was, people, everybody was really into the water tables, it was definitely unanimous.
Okay, cool. All right, looking for a motion?
I have a quick question, isn't the pool open sometimes for lap swimming?
Yes.
So are they swimming around the snake and the, the gator?
No, I can go back to the, the top, so lap swim.
Oh, I see, okay, okay, good enough.
Do you want to? That could be, we could put a real snake in there.
Actually, we talked, we talked about that today, about putting some connections in the lap area, so that maybe you put one of them out just on weekends, because lap lanes are most, a lot of times during the week. So we just, what we're really trying to do is just create options and make it fun for all, you know, wide range of kids, so, you know, three-foot deep area, four-foot deep area, putting some things there.
All right. Go ahead.
The hooks on the floating things, does it actually go into, like, the floor of the pool? So what if we decided we didn't want those, like, what, do you fill that back in, or how?
I don't think there's a need to, I think there's going to be more hooks, I think they're below the surface.
It's like a recess.
It's a recess type thing.
And staff would be able to take that out if they wanted to take it out for?
It's just like putting in, like, lap lanes, you know, you hook, hook the floating things, these are floating things, and they just hook to the bottom instead of the, at ends.
Someone will have to go underwater.
Brad.
They're brats.
What are the floating things made of? Is it foam?
Yeah, it's a real solid foam.
Like, can you bite? Like, are kids going to bite this? No, they're, okay.
No.
Can you wrestle it underwater?
I actually have a little crab made out of the material, sitting on, actually on Jason's desk right now, I said, should I bring that to the council? And I decided not to, so.
And here you got a question.
Had I known.
Yeah, there you go.
I can't go till I feel it, no.
I need the crab.
All right. Anything else? Yeah.
Yeah, as a council, do we want one or two of these rings, so?
Well, is there enough room for all of it without being?
You know, I want to draw a line somewhere, but this is not necessarily the spot.
Good deal.
And I have one other question.
Yeah.
So on the shades, the, do we take them, the shades off for the winter time in storm, or are they just out there all the time, or?
You know, I don't know, our bigger ones we take down in the winter time, the smaller ones on some of our playgrounds we leave up, I don't know that we've decided yet.
Okay.
On these.
All right.
Yeah, it's a good question. I mean, there's a lot of period of time that, that pool's not being used.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the umbrellas that are there now, we do take those down.
Yeah.
It would take, yeah, I think, I'm pretty sure we do.
Yeah. Okay, did you have anything else, Forrest?
No, I was gonna propose the resolution. Um, I move a resolution to approve the purchase and installation of amenities at Crystal Cove Aquatic Center, um, the two, uh, zero-depth ring amenities.
All right, John?
I second that motion.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
So you were lucky you didn't have Tajie here to be able to take you apart, so.
Let's see, we got Crystal Frolics coming on last weekend in July. It's the 25th to the 28th. The scheduled activities is available on our website. Nope, on Crystal Frolics website, crystalfrolics.org. Uh, West Metro Fire Rescue District Open House is July 30th from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at Station 3. Uh, the city council will be holding a budget work session on Thursday, August 1st, from 6:30 PM. That's in the council chambers. Uh, Night 2 Night is August 6th to host a, a block party. Uh, visit the website at crystalmn.gov. Uh, register, you can request police fire, uh, your council representative, uh, what have you. Uh, the next council meeting is Tuesday, August 20th, at 7:00 PM in council chambers, at City Hall. City council meeting and work sessions are open to the public. Uh, you can go to our website and preview previous meetings, either viewing or listening. Um, also, I wanted to mention one more thing on West Metro. They are hiring, if you are considering ever being a firefighter, uh, this is a great opportunity for you to find one of those signs, call the number, and, uh, see if you have the mustard to be a firefighter. Um, any other announcements from the council? Yeah?
Well, just a quick question. I saw there's a ribbon cutting on the 26th.
6th.
Is that council?
Fridays.
Two?
Of course.
Okay.
You're always invited.
I, I do have an announcement as well.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, as part of Frolics, the Friends of Crystal Parks is holding a disc golf tournament at Bassett Creek on the 27th, that Saturday. So really encourage people to apply to that as well.
So, okay, disc golf. I have been watching more people looking for.
Oh, yeah.
Discs.
You probably saw me this last weekend.
I cannot believe the time people spend looking at discs.
I got nettle cuts.
This nettle is, like, up to your shoulders in some spots. And, you know, I, I saw a deer run through there, and I just saw, like, this much of his head. You know, usually they're in my yard, but now they, they're putting in the park.
Also, a, a note, there are about four different froth discs in the, uh, Blue Spruce in the, uh, in the, the froth course. Uh, three of them are mine.
So, uh, the theme is more mowing of the nettle, please.
What's up?
I'm just gonna, gonna mention that, uh, it is a young prairie, and young prairies look bad, and there's weeds and things like that. So actually, I believe, maybe even tomorrow, uh, you'll see, uh, our contractor out there mowing everything down, um, to get some of the prairie plants to grow. So, just, uh, in response to your, uh, your tall prairie, there will be, uh, you will see mowing out there.
I mean, everything, everything I've seen indicates that it's gonna be taller than it was originally built, you know, because when they put those, those plants that they transplanted, they had the plastic delio saying what the characteristics are, and they're a lot bigger. I mean, some of them are taller than me, not that I'm tall. I mean, you all know I'm not. But, uh, a lot of those plants can go higher than me.
And I think some of those taller ones you're seeing now are not the ones that are gonna be there in the future.
They're very bad. There's, there's a lot of plants in there that we don't want.
Okay, good to know. Um, all right, I think that's, I think I'll hold off from making a comment on that.
Sorry, yep.
All right, no more. Is anybody interested in adjourning over there? All right, go ahead.
I will make a motion to adjourning meeting.
All right, thank you. Looking for a second?
Second.
All right, thanks, Forrest. No, you're popping.
I gave you a chance, I don't know.
For sure. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, you guys have a great week.